The quarter. It is Monday, July twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Uh, we will begin with Royal Capital. Trustee Johnson, President. Trustee Thompson, President. Trustee Booker, President. Trustee Woods, here. Trustee Owens, President. President Montgomery, President. And uh, Trustee Grease has been excused for tonight. Uh, we'd like to invite our audience to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any person's desire to be heard?
We do, President. Uh, the first one is Count Copy Fuller, fourteen fifteen South Ninety Second Street, Unit Two Ten in West Dallas.
Okay. Uh, what's the name again?
Uh, Count Copy Fuller. You got it.
In a minute. Uh, you can come to the mic and we will give you approximately three minutes. Who take your comments?
Thank you. Uh, the reason I came before your board, I had no financial interest at this time. I don't sell order door in your city. But uh, I paid your son, pay your work to review. Uh, and it did show us, you know, some of your permits that were issued, that you're nice. Or that she does a great job here, but. She should be a very raised on just. So anyway, there's a company called Moxie Pest Control. They go, it's a one company, they sell, you know, pest services. Their offices located here in Brown Deer, if you didn't know. It's a nationwide company, it's not just one entity here. And it came to my attention that uh, there's a statute that Karen, Karen was a bit, you know, aware that I brought your attention about a week and a half ago was.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So anytime there's a sales crews that come from out of state, these are, it's only pertaining to out of state sales crews. You know, where they don't live in the state of Wisconsin. They're required to go into the state of Wisconsin and go through some northern people. They get a higher, and then the workforce development has a statute which I showed you there. Now, it has been in effect since two thousand and ten. There's a history in that story there. But what's kind of unusual, since two thousand and ten, only two people live by there. Now, is it the courts and the municipalities fault? Or is it the state of Wisconsin's fault that it's not being more policed, so to speak, or enforced? That's the question I have. And the only reason I came to your city uh, is I think that the sales practices that this moxie is involved in is somewhat suspect. And I, I see you, you can see that they had some solicitors issued permits in May or February. So I had you to consider, not today, but um, maybe put it on your agenda for next month. Uh, doing a little more investigation into this moxie pest company. Cause they are in worse village limits. And uh, I've been doing some research on my home, you know, and I come up with some uh, excuse, a list of your complaints. You know, I didn't give out that hip, but your police department gave you a list of the complaints from your residents. And there's another company called Active Environment. They've just got their permits for July seventh to August seventh. They have complied with the state statute, the one that I gave you. But Moxie has not, and they're similar size. So I was uh, I was hoping that you could take this under consideration. And then uh, since I'm retired, so I'm a retired photograph man, you know what photograph company is? I think older people know what that is. So uh, if there's any questions you have, I can give you, I'd like to work with you. Uh, I do have some inside information. But I think uh, it would be helpful. You'd be the first, let's say municipality in the entire state of Wisconsin that was actually issued case for not complying with that. That, that thing.
Okay, well, thank you. And uh, let the record show that I've had a conversation with Mr. Fuller. I agree also, but we are looking into it. Great, well, I appreciate you coming tonight. And uh, we'll see what legally we can do. And our attorney, I believe, has also been looking into it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. And then I'd like to be contacted with other projects.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone?
John Shelton, eighty-four sixty-nine North Forty-Sixth Street in Brown Deer.
Mr. Shelton, you have a few minutes to.
Thank you. Um, my name is John Shelton, I'm a Brown Deer resident for thirty years. I live in the metal side homeowners. This uh,
Subdivision.
Subdivision. I'm the president of the homeowners association there. Um, and we talked about getting ahead a little bit, and I only have limited time here today. Um, the proposed use of the sixteen acres out there.
Right.
And uh, two things with that. Um, one was when we had a meeting at our subdivision with uh, the village. Basically, everyone at the meeting was recommending that it be privately owned condo. Uh, now it looks like it's going to be a sports. Two questions. One, does the property go all the way around your road in terms of that building that used to be the small?
Um, the bank.
Bank.
Yeah.
Does it go that far?
Yes.
So it goes all the way to Brown Deer?
Yes.
And that's addressed as forty-eight oh one.
West Brown Deer.
West Brown Deer. Okay. And two, when we saw the announcement, it looked like things were almost ready to be signed. And then they were talking about a market study. And in my business background, you usually do a full market study before you get to the point of signing anything and putting a project together. And it's just a concern um, in that regard, for you to lose that process and seems a little off, top center. Right back. Um, one more question or statement. Um, I've been hearing a lot from my people in our subdivision calling me as president and asking me about the assessments that are happening. And it seems like it's imbalance between the larger homes and the smaller homes in that area. And we're going to be going in and talking to the assessors, but something seems way out of whack from everyone that we've talked to. It's just a lot of stuff not making sense between, you know, this property with this many square feet and this much additional uh, like building onto it.
Right.
Lower floor uh, upgrades and stuff like that.
So you will be, have you contacted the assessment?
Will be going in tomorrow to talk to. But I just need the board to hear that a lot of talking about, it's just not consistent uh, between the types of properties in, in our subdivision at least. And I know prices are going up generally, but in, in our case, our home part was up more than like almost thirty-five percent. Which seems kind of outrageous for a single storehouse. You know, it has no other improvements.
I think, um, I know that's not on the agenda tonight.
Right.
But uh, you probably could go to all the board members and they may have questions too about the assessment. So know that you're not alone, but also know that um, this is a process. And so certainly, if you have a meeting tomorrow, come and ask those questions directly.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, I'm speaking for a lot of people in the metal side, so.
Well, we appreciate you coming, they should have came with you. I know.
You know.
But if you can stay, I don't know if you can stay to hear part of it, it's being recorded too.
Yeah, I, I, I have another appointment.
Okay. Well, uh.
I'll stay for you.
Okay. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Okay. So we will continue with our agenda. Um, we have next on our agenda, the elected officials and staff reports and those that are in your packet. Um, and uh, I should have mentioned this girl, you're tired, not here tonight because she's on vacation. But uh, uh, I think many of the staff are here, so any questions we might have, they can probably address. But um, under the uh, elected official and staff reports, uh, I'd like to read a proclamation. And I'm gonna ask um, Ms. Candice Wright to come up. Or Mrs. Candice Wright to come up. And uh, she is a representative from Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And was it about two years ago?
Uh-huh.
That they approached the village and several other uh municipalities around supporting their uh interests in starting a chapter in the suburbs of Milwaukee for this sorority. And so they have completed the work that was required over the last two years. And uh, we will be presenting, will you be able to give her the proclamation tonight or will she?
Yeah.
Okay.
Consider me get that.
So I will read just a portion of it. Um, but they will be uh chartered on Sunday, August tenth. But it says, uh, whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha, Alpha, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority founded in nineteen twelve has an illustrious history of service, scholarship, and sisterhood, empowering communities through education, economic development, and social justice. And whereas the perpetual roses of Wisconsin Interest Group was formed with the vision of their founders to bring perpetuity and legacy of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated to many Milwaukee metropolitan area communities, including Brown Deer, demonstrating commitment and dedication to service, leadership, and advocacy. And whereas the members of Perpetual Roses of Wisconsin Interest Group have made significant contributions to the Brown Deer community through initiatives aligned with the international programs of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, I'm so used to saying AKA, that's my history up. Including the elementary school Mittens and Sock Drive, Baptist School Supply Drive, Black History Month Program, Social Justice Efforts, Educational Outreach, a Color Rock, and Monthly Birthday Cupcakes, positively impacting residents through service projects and partnerships with social organizations, reinforcing the values of service, demand, talent. And I won't read the last, whereas, but it says now therefore be resolved, I, President Montgomery, do hereby proclaim Sunday, August tenth, twenty twenty five, as Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Day in the Village of Brown Deer and extend our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to the new chapter. We celebrate their dedication to uplifting our community and look forward to the continued positive impact they will have for years to come. I do have one question then, uh, President uh, right, you can probably answer. What are the other suburbs that are part of this chapter?
Waukesha County, Washington County, and O'Leary.
Okay. And Brown Deer in Waukesha County.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we stand out. So, yes. Congratulations and um, yeah.
I'll finish.
Well. And for, for full transparency, our trustee here uh, is um also a AKA. You can yell my name.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, oh, any other questions relative to elected official and staff reports? If not, we will move forward with our consent agenda. And in our consent agenda tonight, we have consideration of minutes for the July seventh, twenty twenty five meeting, accept the June twenty twenty five voucher statement, and consider an exception to the Walmart government agreement to allow for an outdoor propane vending machine. Any questions or corrections to the minutes or questions to any of the other items? Our trustee Owens.
I had a question in regards to uh, letter C, considering an exception to the Walmart development agreement. Are there any other outdoor propane vendors or businesses in Brown Deer? Yeah, there are. Walgreen.
So uh, trustee Owens, there are definitely outdoor propane storage uh, devices, but this is the first that we know of, of one that actually is a vending machine that were operated one-four-seven, where it has a, a kiosk, electronic carburetor and so on that will unlock the propane storage. You don't need to go into the retail location and actually find an associate to come out, unlock the key and do the exchange for you. So uh, this is somewhat unique. And the reason for the initial prohibition at Walmart was to generally try to regulate the what, what you might see is the proliferation of soda machines, video rentals, a lot of the things.
Which they use to hang.
Yes, that uh, can, can find a way outside of retail establishments. Uh, this we think is kind of unique because the propane storage obviously needs to be outside for, for safety and fire uh, prevention. And so that is why we're more comfortable allowing or recommending staff level this kind of singular exception to the development agreement.
Due to the other vendors following that?
It may be possible then, uh, we might see that as Blue Rhino, kind of the, the operator of most of the cages looks to make this perhaps a, a more uh, widespread model.
Fair thinking.
Other questions? If not, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm willing to approve the consent agenda. Uh, I'm willing to approve the consent agenda now.
Perfect. It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Booker to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? I said that motion here is, thank you. The next item on our agenda under new business is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding with Cobalt Partners for the redevelopment of Layan, Beckett Layan in the eighty-six hundred block of North Arbona Drive. Maybe?
So what you have in your packet this evening is a non-binding memorandum of understanding, an MOU that outlines a framework for the potential assistance and potential redevelopment of the approximate sixteen acres that Royal Capital has agreed to sell uh, to Cobalt Partners uh, along with uh, some other investors for the purposes of a sports recreational facility. I believe uh, you have all seen the uh, press release that came out from Cobalt that kind of outlines uh, the larger concept of this recreational and event space with the potential for basketball courts, uh, volleyball courts, hockey rinks, footsall, uh, other indoor recreation uh, spaces as well as amenities to support that. And Corey, Zobin, the governors and Scott Yaw of Cobalt are here in this evening and can answer questions. And they were here previously uh, to touch on that, that big picture concept and how that fits in. Uh, they are actively working with Sports Facilities Company on the programming and analysis of how that space can function. Our tourism committee previously also recommended a support for the market analysis that would kind of go hand in hand as this uh, project moves through the various processes here at the village. And within the MOU itself, the framework that is outlined identifies the responsibilities of Cobalt and, and Corey uh, as they go through their due diligence, their site plan analysis, their uh, TIF analysis, and the rezoning efforts. And then it talks about the village's side of the equation in which we outline the potential for a, a loan to help secure the acquisition of the property within seventy-five days. Talking about also the financial assistance that the village would contemplate as part of a TIF package. Again, this is a non-binding document, so there is no firm commitments at this time, but it just suggests that we will evaluate that once information is presented uh, to staff and then ultimately through our various committees. And then ultimately that we work with them on the rezoning of the site and any other necessary easements or adjustments to right of way that may be required as part of the site planning process. So that MOU is in your packet, uh, again, it's out and according, or here can answer the questions that asked by.
And so um, the MOU is here, the but we also, and that's the next agenda I introduced from the, the marketing. So that's, they're gonna be done, how long would it take for the marketing to study? Or the?
So I believe we are looking at probably two to three months for that. So it really kind of lines up with
Seventy-five days.
Seventy-five days for, for a loan procurement. Uh, later this year, they'd be looking at going through kind of the site planning entitlement rezoning process. So we think that it fits really well. And broadly speaking, just from our own analyses and that of Corey, Scott, Cobalt, we sense that the demand is very strong. And so this market study really uh, we, we are, we are expecting it to reinforce our assumptions. But uh, we want to go through that process to make sure that those assumptions are correct.
Questions? Trustee Johnson.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the economic impact that this would have on the, you know, too. Cause you know, if you look at the different venues, you know, that I serve now, uh, on the his gym reading, the, or hotel, the, the, uh, deals, restaurants. We kind of screen up what we hold with this development participation.
I, I think it would be significant. Uh, do I have a concept of what that is right now? No, uh, I can tell you uh, just as a, as an anecdote, that uh, the press release went out on uh, Friday of this past week and the director of Visit Milwaukee uh, immediately saw the uh, saw the release and was quite frankly, over the moon, sent an email to Scott, which, which she copied us on and said, this is outstanding for the region, I would love to partner with you. I recognize how much of an economic development impact this could make, not just out of Brown Deer, but the region as a whole. Corey talked about it, Scott talked about it last time they were here, that when we've looked at the facilities, be it in Mount Pleasant or Appleton, uh, or even farther field, the amount of hotelites that you have associated with these venues, whether it be for tournaments or, or traveling teams, uh, is, sees a substantial increase. You have kind of a captive group of people that come in regularly, uh, week in and week out that patronize your businesses, your restaurants, your convenience stores. And so the impact is quite large and we see a huge gap in the market. So I don't know, Scott or Corey, do you have any, any kind of specific ideas on numbers? But uh, you know, I think that's something that we'll see in the sports facilities uh, study. There's probably a little bit more analysis on, you know, average increase on uh, you know, restaurants or hotel stays. Something I don't know right now, but I expect it to be significant.
Is there a downside as far as impact on communities, as far as traffic noise and?
I think you could have some increase in traffic for sure. Uh, you know, you're, you're, you're going to be drawing, uh, you know, hundreds of people to sports events, practices. Uh, you know, I think we see some of that at the school district when they have a big tournament at the Field House. You know, it's not unlike something like that. But with this particular site, I think the infrastructure around it uh, is one that can support it. You know, we have a major six-lane highway. We'll be adding a signal to that intersection at Arbona Drive. You have uh, kind of a self-contained site there. Uh, we obviously do want to work with the metal side subdivision as they are just to the south, there are some homes to the east. But otherwise, you're in a, you're in a more commercial area. Uh, and, and so I think the uh, the traffic will, will be maybe, or will be handled. Uh, noise, I think will be generally contained within the facility. Uh, this is not, I mean, I would, it's not intended to have outdoor in uh, courts and fields. So really, you're talking about kind of a, an internal uh, sporting event situation. So I think that's not really going to be an issue. I think definitely we'll see traffic, but you have, you have it in probably one of the better spots in Brown Deer to handle it.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Owens.
I have a question. Trustee side of the citizens, right?
The uh, well, what we're talking about is divided up into multiple lots. Uh, it stretches from the old bank branch, the old uh, Associated Bank, Bank Mutual Branch Facility on the corner of Arbona. And then it goes south and all told, you know, some, some of the lots are two acres, some are three. It adds up to just about sixteen acres.
For clarity, he's asked to be, that's the bank.
No, 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 First Citizens. Oh, First Citizens, sorry. Uh, First Citizens is going to be with, with the addition of uh, the excess right of way, it'll be about six acres. So, it's too small. Uh, and, and we actually, we actually looked at that and talked about it with Corey and Scott, but it just, uh, it would not be sufficient in terms of size. Sorry, I thought.
Pretty many banks that we got.
Right.
You have banks, citizens bank, associated bank.
Yeah.
Bank Mutual. If we don't know by now, banks, well, we, or we purpose in the sales. Other questions? And just, uh, Mr. Shelton is here. Have we had, say in the last ten years, anyone approach us about hotels? You know, we've had some conversation, but.
We, we have not, uh, other than Royal Capital did have a concept as part of their uh, residential development when they purchased property about two and a half years ago. Uh, they were looking at a portion of that site, maybe a quarter of it to be a for-sale product. But their plans never materialized beyond the concept. And so uh, we have only otherwise had multifamily proposed.
How long have you voted?
Multi-family.
How long have you voted Royal Capital acquired the property? I can't remember.
It was about three or four years. About three years ago.
I have a question. Trustee Johnson.
Um, related to the site still, will be additional spaces now being developed? What is the long-term plan for that? Or will they take up a whole acreage?
My sense is they'll probably take mostly acreage, uh, at least on the southern half. As you get up towards Brown Deer Road, I think what you're looking at there is perhaps some more commercial uses that might be uh, support services uh, for the facility. Uh, something that uh, you, you may see a restaurant or uh, kind of a mixed-use retail building. Uh, or I should say a multi-tenant retail building where you have uh, a restaurant, a, a coffee shop, a deli. And maybe uh, maybe you also look to have a sports medicine uh, component there or a chiropractor or something. You know, perhaps some retail element or some, some other uses that might. You know, perhaps some retail element or some, some other uses that might be supportive to the. To the concept of, you know, a lot of sports users coming to the site. And then, you know, you're talking probably about, I would guess, anywhere from a hundred fifty. To a hundred seventy-five, maybe two hundred thousand square foot building at the end of the day. And that would take up a big chunk of the rest of the sixty acres along with. Along with the unnecessary parking that would be on site to accommodate, you know, these larger events.
Okay, existing building, mutual, mutual, bank, T bank?
Bank, well, it's bank, it's bank, it's now that you have a, you have an old bank, mutual, associated bank. Range and then ETE Engine Transmission Repair Company is in the old headquarters of the bank, mutual, and associated bank.
So are they staying or would they be redeveloping potentially into what?
Well, I would, I would, I would tell you that there's, I think, conversations that are being had with the Cobalt team. And ETE about the potential of that building moving forward. I think there's some sense, there's some logic into perhaps looking at that building. And kind of wrapping that into the overall redevelopment, whether it be for a commercial use. Perhaps something like a hotel use. But obviously, ETE would need to, want to sell the property and then they would have to find another headquarters building. Now, we have talked with ETE recently about this concept and all the other development that's happening in the area. They're very happy in Brown Deer. They like to stay in Brown Deer. And I think they're in conversations as we speak with Cory and Scott about the potential for that site.
I mean, it sounds like a great development for the area. I have needing more information.
Sure. Other questions? So Boris tonight is to consider approval of a MOU. With Cobalt for the redevelopment of Baker Lane at eighty-six hundred. At eighty-six hundred blocks of North, of North Draper. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'm going to validate, is this from what, nineteen?
One, we're moved to approve the MOU. That's the next one.
Okay, I made the motion to approve the MOU with a couple of partners for the redevelopment of Baker Lane. Eighty-six hundred block of North, of North Draper. I'll second that.
It's been moved by Trustee Johnson and seconded by Trustee Thompson to approve the memorandum of understanding. With Cobalt Partners for the redevelopment of Baker Lane in the eighty-six hundred block of North, of North Draper. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have the motion carries. Thank you. Are you going to stay for the second hour? I can't. So this is to consider a service agreement to perform a marketing research study on recreation center. With the sports facilities companies. That is in your packet? So, and they just kind of talked about it already, but basically to get more information. So as they're working on their plan, we're working on our end. Do our due diligence.
Yes, to validate essentially the demand for this particular product, which we think is very strong. We see that there's a gap in the market broadly in this region. And Sports Facilities Company is really one of the leading operators and researchers in this field. They, they previously operated the Champion Center in Appleton, which is a kind of a direct comparison to what. Scott, Cory are looking to do here, and they really know this space. And so we anticipate that they would be able to kind of validate that supply and demand question. As well as kind of get into some of what Trustee Johnson was asking about, which is the, the impact of this facility. Kind of what does it need in terms of dollars, cents in the community? A portion of this study, as I also alluded to, is being covered for by the Tourism Commission. Or, which can be done in Tourism Fund, which is made up of the village's hotel room tax. And that's a component of this project that we would hope will grow as part of the redevelopment. So with that, we'd be looking for what Trustee Johnson was, was looking to recommend to us the last time.
Any questions? And when would this start? If approved tonight, when would we be moving forward?
Well, they are ready and waiting in the wings. We kind of had a couple of false starts. And we've rescheduled a meeting for next week with them as a kickoff if this were to be approved. So. You guys know?
You guys have a question you can make it to? What's the worst case scenario that could come out of this report?
Worst case scenario would be they would tell us that. Nobody wants to play sports anymore and that there are way too many facilities in the area. And if you build it, this will fail. Then, I think that would probably send shockwaves through Cory and Scott. And they, I would assume they would pull the plug. We wouldn't necessarily be the ones to have to, to, you know. Debate whether or not we need to do TIF assistance or, you know, secure a loan. I think if it came back that awful, that would, that would be shocking. And I would suspect that as investors in this product, they, they would probably decide to rethink their idea for the site.
Other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll move to validate nineteen thousand five hundred in the tourist fund. To pay for the market research study for the recreational.
Is there a second? Also, the, the move by Trustee Johnson and seconded by Trustee Woods to approve. Service agreement to perform a marketing study, or the motion is to approve nineteen thousand five hundred. For the tour, from the tourism fund to pay for a market research study for recreation center. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is. I would see Consider Ordinance Number Twenty-Five, Pardon Oh Six, to amend Chapter Six. Of our ordinance where it has now. And this, I think we had a lot of discussion. Was it last year or earlier this year? Where. The ordinance, we were talking about chickens.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, Nate, you wanna make a list up?
Yeah, I've been walking through this. So very simply, we received a complaint, an inquiry from a resident. About someone in Brown Deer keeping pigeons. And Mark Sturrell, Officer Sturrell, went out to investigate based on the complaint. And identified that this property did have numerous pigeons in coops in their backyard. We circled back as a, as a staff after Mark came back and identified pigeons. And talked with prosecuting attorney Boyle and asked if our current animals ordinance. Related to wild, the keeping of wild animals was sufficient to cover pigeons. And it was her opinion that it was not. It did talk about various animals and birds of prey. Talks about chickens now, of course, in a separate section. You know, lions and tigers and bears, but it didn't have pigeons. And so we, because of the complaint, we are bringing forward a very simple ordinance change. That now, along with the lions, tigers and bears that you cannot keep in Brown Deer. You would be prohibited from keeping of pigeons. And in the case of this particular residence, if you were to adopt this ordinance. The village would now go ahead and enforce that new ordinance and require that. This individual or this property owner remove the pigeons.
And you said, if you give a note, can you give a ballpark?
So it was, it was, I, I don't know what Mark identified out there, but the complaint was that there was fifty plus pigeons. And he noticed dozens of, yeah, I don't know what you call it, coops or.
I think people kind of gave an idea.
Holders of pigeons kind of on a, you know, a mounted box setup. And tickets, we can only get four. Correct.
Are these like racing pigeons? Are they homing pigeons?
They're, they're most likely homing pigeons. I have the famous example I can think of is Mike Tyson. Had homing pigeons on a rooftop in New York and he would, you know, talk to them. This is my Tyson voice, I won't emulate. But you can send them out and they would, they would come back. And I'm assuming that this individual does the same thing, you know, historically, they're used on battlefields and, you know, send across enemy lines. I, I don't know if this person is sending messages to people, you know, in other cities or what. I, I really don't know. Mark obviously did not have permission to trespass on the property. And did not engage with the property owner to kind of ask them what they were doing with the pigeons. So it, it really is at your discretion. Staff, you know, does not have a strong opinion, either in favor or against. You know, this was a complaint that came to us. We could see that there would be a concern if somebody's hosting fifty birds in their backyard. Just from a, a noise and, and maybe, you know, kind of. Dirty fobos, F1 situations. So that is what we have before you. It is a change to our code. You'll see the ordinance language in your packet. It basically just adds. If pigeons.
Questions? So this ordinance, I'm saying for pigeons, the keeping of pigeons means no pigeons, so they can't come back and say, well, I got four pigeons, you got four chickens. Correct. Other questions?
Did anybody ask the other?
We did not, no.
I mean, that can add to Greece and that we used to.
I know, we're not there. Yeah, right, they're carrying messages and again.
They got down wrong with that.
Yeah, I understand.
What was the complaint? They just had.
Too many?
Too many or.
Oh, was it the nuisance?
I think it was more of the nuisance factor of the noise, the birds kind of fluttering about. You know, kind of leaving the yard, flying around in, in the cage, you know, the excrement. And maybe there was some odor there with, with birds. But. I don't, I don't know why they have fifty pigeons.
Other questions? Yes, Trustee Johnson.
Are we sure we don't miss anything?
I thought.
Yeah, any other animals or something else?
So the station, there's an example, there, there's a wallaby that cut a hair right now.
Big silent animal.
And so, so in talking with attorney Boyle. Our, our language does broadly open up the wild animal category. Her concern was that people have obviously domesticated pigeons, you know. And so, just like you can now domesticate chickens here in Brown Deer and keep four of them. So, and, and there are some communities that do allow for the keeping of pigeons. And so she thought it was better that we clarify the code language. And don't just rely on the broad definition of wild animal. Whereas with a wallaby, well, we don't spell out a wallaby, but we should be able. Argue sufficiently that a wallaby is a wild animal. It's not really a domesticated animal. Or a chimpanzee is a wild animal, not a domesticated animal. Pigeons, she thought, was different because they are allowed to be kept in other municipalities. There is this kind of history of people having domesticated pigeons to send messages or whatever they might be doing. And so that's why it's in here. So we don't think we're missing anything else right now.
Is it a case where we could limit the number of pigeons like we did with chickens?
We could, we just did not investigate that. In what aspects?
Yeah, and, and what that means, because with the chickens, we came up with certain. Cane.
Yes.
Have, have a curve in it.
There, I mean, if, if that's the board's direction, we could investigate that further. There are some examples of pigeon keeping allowance in other municipalities. It just, it just didn't seem to be the desire, that strong of a desire. We've not heard of anybody asking to keep pigeons, whereas chickens, we definitely heard from a lot of the community. Over the years about when to keep it. So that was.
But there was also benefit in the chickens. They, they could get eggs.
Well, I think the other problem is chickens are already prohibited. And then one.
We had a change in that.
Whereas the pigeons right now are not prohibited.
And with pigeons, I mean, they're used for like weddings, funerals.
Other questions?
I'm just, you know, aren't they part of the food chain, overall food chain, like?
Yes, wobbles would be pigeon.
Yeah. So. We will allow chickens.
But not to eat.
Well, I'm not gonna get the pigs.
No, but we, the chickens are not allowed. I can't kill chickens.
Yeah, there's no butcher.
There's no butcher. Other questions?
Nate, are you looking up the code?
No, I was, if, if high-end restaurants do, sir, I was just looking up various pigeons.
I've got it up if you needed the code provision.
So we do have before us an amendment. Yes.
So was it ever discussed with the homeowner and, and this? Come in front of them or to discuss the wider calendar? What the benefit is and anything like that?
No, we could, if, again, the board is. You know, if you, if you wanted to take a different approach, whereas, you know, we notify the resident that. You know, this is up for consideration. You know, they can come and speak their case. We, we can, we can do that. There's no, we're not in any big rush. I don't think there's a big concern that there's going to be a proliferation of pigeons around town. But, I mean, keeping of pigeons, I'm sure there are pigeons around town. But it's, it's really up to, up to the board as to if you want to enact the ordinance tonight. Or if you want to take a process where we notify the homeowner and let them come and, and speak to their keeping of pigeons.
Trustee Woods.
I, I mean, I guess my, my problem is, is that. There was a complaint made. And the investigation so far is, well, pigeons. And we don't have a, you know, an idea about pigeons, but it's still noise, odor, whatever. Somebody complained about all these things and the investigation kind of stalled out with, well, it's pigeons. But I'm not sure that it makes. Well, I'm not sure that it makes a difference whether it's pigeons or wallabies or whatever. At this point, it's. How do we adjust the noise and things like that without going, do we have to go to to- total prohibition? Or is there something in between? You know, is there just too many pigeons? In one place and if they cut it back. That takes care of the noise and the odor and the neighbors are happy? I just kind of wonder. I mean, I'd like to see us do something intermediate first to see if we can. Solve the problem without having to go to prohibition.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, didn't talk to the person. If I didn't find out, be more by. Other than just.
I think the, I think the issue was that because of the ordinance. The, the resident felt like this was covered. And when they got. Uh, advisement from legal, they thought we should add it. That's why we're here.
That, that's correct, yeah. We generally, uh, when we received the complaint, uh. Myself and Mark and Tyler, we thought that. Someone's keeping a wild animal. You, you are prohibited from doing so. And. In Attorney Boyle's opinion. It was not as clear cut and she did not feel confident that if we were to tell them to remove the pigeons. That, uh, it would be supportable by, uh, the municipal attorney, or excuse me, the bespoke judge. Without this added piece of. Definition in the ordinance.
So, uh, what is the, uh, position of the board?
My sense is, this is, this is me, I think we should allow that individual to come before the board. And share with us. His reasoning for having so many pigeons. And I think at that point in time, we can make a decision if we want to prohibit pigeons within. Right, go ahead.
Uh, whatever the, the majority of the board goes with, but I'm concerned that we open ourselves up for all the other stuff. This is pigeons today and there are things that. People push that involved. If they think that every time we want to bring something, they come up with a board. That's why it's better to have things in place. We thought we had it in place, but. You add things. Um, and I would keep bringing somebody in. But whatever the board decides. Have them present why they got pigeons. We vote against it. Because then you technically will be voting against that person without it. You to have an ordinance to support what's going on here. And though. But. It's whatever the board decides.
Um, do we make that by making the motion, see the votes up or down and we just?
Is. We have an opportunity here and if we amend. The motion. Uh, we would have to do, we do a roll call vote because it's an ordinance. Do we need to?
Unless there's a motion to.
Not, but I'm saying if, if, if somebody makes the motion and then passes, then you do amend the motion, I mean, the ordinance would do roll call. And here's, here's the deal. Whether we do it that way or we, because the person could still come in and say. By exception, can you, can I do this? So, um, I'm just thinking. Uh, if they come in and say, I've got sixty pigeons, then somebody got to determine how many can you hang.
I'm just thinking. My opinion is we need more information from this individual who has the pitch. Uh, if we just wanted this whole cell, no pigeons, period. We've really had, we've not put any thought into this other than just making them admit it to the ordinance. To me, that's not. Give the homeowner an opportunity to. Uh, explain what, why we're doing it with. I don't even, how long have they been?
Uh, did you have something more to say? No.
Oh, uh, if I could, yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
If, I just have a question for Nate. I, it sounds like. The discussion between staff and Rebecca as the municipal prosecuting attorney for the North Shore was that. It seems as if the purpose and intent of the ordinance restricting the keeping of certain animals. Certainly, the purpose and intent would be to prohibit this. But it doesn't quite say that as explicitly as it otherwise might. And if we run into this problem in the future, that the recommendation is, is to just make the, the, the ordinance cleaner and clearer. Is that, is that a way to put it?
Yes.
So, in other words, right now, it was somewhat surprising to find that this was allowed, fair?
Fair.
So, the, 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 it, it's not, well, do we want? You know, do, do, do we necessarily want pigeons? It's. W- w- we thought that they were prohibited with the way we're interpreting the purpose and intent of the existing ordinance. But it, this makes it a little cleaner and clearer for us to enforce it. So, it seems like the policy decision was. Already made a while ago, but this is to clarify, but I just thought that might be a way to frame it, to look at it. But hey, if you want to say, I don't know, I'd like to learn more, maybe we don't have to, you know, I, I. Generally speaking, I don't think that most. Um, cities or towns and villages of the side generally allow that kind of thing because. Of the thing you, you talked about. But, you know, if you want more information, you can certainly do that. I just thought that. Might be a way to frame it as. Really, the staff recommendation is clean up the ordinance to make the intent more clear as opposed to. A policy change, if you will, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion then. Uh, I'm not making a motion to approve the ordinance twenty five to old six people here. Keeping of pigeons.
I'll second.
The move by Trusty Johnson, decided by Trusty Thompson. To prove the amendment to chapter six. Animal article one, section sixty eleven, to prohibit the keeping of pigeons. All those in favor, or? Roll call vote. Uh, Trusty Johnson.
Alright.
Trusty Booker.
No.
Trusty Thompson.
Yeah.
Trusty Woods?
No.
Trusty, uh, Holmes. President Montgomery, uh. So we have, uh, the motion failed. Um, and is there another motion?
I'm not sure that we, at this point, need another motion. There was a complaint made. And why aren't we investigating based on what the complaint was?
They did.
No, he brought it back and said it's pigeons. That is not, that, I mean. Was it noise? Was it odor? Was it feces hanging up around everywhere? I mean, all of those are illegal in and of themselves. And we can force the cleanup of all that. And if that's what the problem is, then let's deal with that. If it's got too many pigeons. And they're, I mean, are we talking New York City? In the middle of the park pigeons? Or are we talking homing racing pigeons? Which is, you know, open for ballgame. But do we need first to force this person to clean up? And if that mean they have to get rid of some of their pigeons? Or all of their pigeons to solve our problem? Why aren't we doing that first?
I think the issue is because. According to. Attorney Boyle, we needed to have that in the language. To do anything. So it's specific. Right now pigeons are not in here. Uh, correctly if I'm wrong or attorney there. Which I thought was just saying.
Yeah, I mean, I, at this point, the prosecutor is telling us they're not, that she's not comfortable prosecuting as written. As written. Um, but with respect to a failed motion. Um, I looked into this once before that I didn't see anything in the. Um, Brown Deer ordinances that say. If a piece of legislation fails, you have to wait X amount of weeks or months before you can bring it back. Cause it's not a past motion. Has to have a motion to reconsider. Um, by somebody who voted for it, but this is just a failed. Failed motion, so the body didn't take any action at all, so.
So we could bring it back?
You could, you could. I mean, a year, a month from now, a year from now, three years, no. Six months, whatever you want. You can always do it again. When you have seven, then there won't be a tie vote.
Right, and I, I would, I would offer, uh, I'm sure there's no harm in working back through Mark Sorrell. And asking him to reach out to the homeowner to find out a little bit more about the keeping of these pigeons, what they are. How many there are. Obviously, they don't necessarily have to. Comply with, with his request, but I, I don't think it would be that hard to. Do a little further investigation and then be able to report further and, and a subsequent review.
Alright.
Well, I have, I don't, that's totally the same thing. You can talk to the homeowner until he's blue in face. Odor and noise is already covered by our ordinances.
Noise is, odor is, odor is not accepted in our manufacturing district.
It's in the residential area. You know, it's just like they can, you know, you can't, uh. You know, the same reason when we changed the chicken ordinance, when we put in all the rules.
But that's in the ordinance of the chicken. And we're off, we're off the topic now. We're getting motion failed. So we will move forward. The next item is to present twenty twenty six. To twenty thirty capital improvement. Derek?
Oh, you think, uh, I'm just gonna get a free virtual overhaul. Process or anything, I'm trying to about watching this. This is a plan we do every year. It's for the next five years. With. The main goal being auto being financed and paid for some of our larger ticket items. Which are often the infrastructure such as streets, water mains, who are being. Form water. Other heavy machinery, you know, police vehicles. Different things like that. So. The main impact is a, for this plan will be. We have our capital improvement fund and this will determine what we need to levy. For next year for twenty six levy, and then we do a. Borrowing every other year. So in early twenty twenty six, we will borrow. For these projects that include two thousand twenty six to two thousand twenty seven. So basically, you send us off to all the departments and they make their pitch. As to what they need to run their departments properly. And then try to summarize everything, present it to you. We have our permanents here to go over their items. And I guess that would be probably best to start that. Wanna start with the chief?
Okay, so in our capital improvement plan for twenty twenty six, we have just the two items. Our police vehicle replacement and flock safety cameras. Police vehicle replacement would be replacing, uh, three squads. We try to rotate that. Every other year, there's two, three, two, two, three, something of that nature. And so we're in that year of, of replacing three squads. So that would be the hundred and ninety thousand dollars and then the flock safety cameras, um. Would be the other twenty six thousand dollars that we'd be requesting. And I'll just add one thing as we move further in the years, if you go to twenty twenty seven. Um, I'll just briefly touch on this. We had put in for the, um, handheld radio grant. That we were hopeful that we were going to get. However, we were just informed, uh, late. Friday, early Monday, that we did not make the cut. So that three hundred sixty one thousand made grants in two thousand twenty seven. Uh, will have to be recalculated and I talked briefly with Tyler today. And he'll be, uh, working with. Um, myself and Derek to kind of rework, uh, to get that back into tax levy. Um, probably over the course of two, two years is what originally was before. We were hopeful that we were going to get the grant. So that was a little bit disappointing that we didn't get it, but it's. Obviously competitive, a lot of people are competing for money, but I just wanted to point that out that there probably have to be some adjustments. Twenty twenty seven beyond to get the, uh, the radio purchase back into that tax levy.
And who did we, who did we apply?
Uh, that was through Senator Baldwin's office.
Oh, yeah.
She accepted it, she put it forward, but it just didn't make the cut.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions?
Alright, just kind of going down the order here. After police mail, other public safety, and we get these numbers, so we got our. Obviously, we're consolidated for our fire department and our dispatch. So this comes from Chief Licker. He did say that it is not a final number. We had anticipated it going up. He thinks this is what it's going to be, but. We just wanted to give a heads up that there could be a possible. Increase coming. If, I think they had another source of revenue they were planning on getting, but it was not final.
This is the four seventy five?
That is, it's three eighty four. For two thousand twenty six and the geo debt.
Oh, okay.
That's where, that's basically Brown Deer's share of paying for. The fire trucks and the heavy equipment that the fire department uses. And then the same concept for the dispatch with the Village of Bayside being. The people who are running dispatch for the Village of Brown Deer.
Okay.
Is this for a new truck? We're paying part of the new truck or is this? And we don't get like a list of everything they're using it, but I mean. Like the North Shore Fire Department is not able to take out debt on their own, so when they build their new station. Like in Glendale, they have, the city of Glendale take up the debt for them. Then. I'm not exactly sure on how they cooperate all their needs, but. It will be for paying off the future buildings and future fire trucks.
Yeah. And a lot of times our portion is calculated off of our usage.
Correct.
And we have a high use.
Alright, are there questions on fire dispatch?
The other manager.
So these are basically from, we also need the Village of Bayside for our T department. So the computer replacement is something that we have every year. Bayside has a. spreadsheet where they have everyone in the village with their new computer. That, these come directly from them, so eighteen thousand is what they expect. Our new computers to be three point six. That is a pretty straightforward one I'll give her every year. The next one, I think we brought this up. Couple times in the last couple of years. They've been itching this to us for. Well, since we switched them three years ago, we will eventually need to replace our servers. And if you go into their write-up, you can see that they, if we were to. Kind of expand what Bayside already has, or in Bayside, it would cost us around thirty thousand. Whereas if we replace our servers here, it would cost them a two hundred thousand. So there are huge cost savings. Caveat to that being, it would be very difficult for them, even if we ever. Like had an issue where we're like, oh, should we try and get someone new?
Then we got the pay fall.
Right, we're kind of stuck with that. For now, but. We did recommend that we do that as the cost savings are quite substantial.
Questions?
Yeah. Three fifty is, uh, we originally had a hundred in here. We're, we're gonna try and do some more parks up. Every other year, so twenty six, eight, thirty, we have park improvement laws in there. So the original hundred, when we came in overbid for the. Restrooms for the pond, their concession and restroom facility. We had a hundred thousand, we were going to do for this year anyways, and then we were over by another two fifty. So that three fifty is basically repaying our capital improvement fund. We had a memo, we had a memo last November, I believe.
Yeah.
So we, we had to dip into our sewer pump, which has a lot of cash to kind of. Pay for that project and this will be repaid. pay for that project, and this will be repaying it. And then there was a small ten thousand dollar home we put in levy. And we had this two years ago as well, and it was just basic maintenance to upkeep the pond. And those there is the number for twenty twenty seven with our new renovation. Yeah, we're, we've been doing it on a every year basis, so if you go to twenty, you have a bond there. Thirty, we have a law. It's kind of the same concept, those were borrowing a hundred here for it, okay. And then we can go to Matthew for all the public works, and he also does the storm and sewer utility part.
So, equipment wise, um, we have, we have six pile trucks, six pile trucks in the village, and, um, we're replacing truck number seventy five. Um, and that was the first truck that we purchased when it first started here. So now it's up for replacement again. Uh, but this is a good thing, it's, it's a similar style engine and truck that we had seen some problems with. And so, Matt, our mechanic, is kind of happy that this is up in the queue, and then all of our fleet will be the same model truck going forward. Um, so that is due for, you know, replacement in twenty six. Um, and then our road projects, so, um, the big one in twenty six is gonna be the pound. So we have Sherman Boulevard from Bradley to Dean. Um, that's gonna be the big monster project that, that goes on in twenty six. Um, the village does have participation on that project, so there's a bunch of storm sewer work that we are contributing to. We are also adding sidewalk, uh, Sherman, that will contribute to. Uh, we did add an item in here where you see Meadow Side and County Line Road Sidewalk. That is for Trustee Greaves, uh, on about that sidewalk, it's the connection from Meadow Side out to the project, and the village would be paying for that a hundred percent. The county line portion is the, the gap that we have, um, west of the railroad tracks and east of the railroad tracks by Spankies. And so this is to close that gap. And the reason that it was not done as part of this last go-around was because the railroad wasn't ready to do that gap. So we're still coordinating with the railroad, but that will likely occur then in twenty six to close that gap. The other item that we have on here, that's a little bit of a catch-all item, is this street, bridge, and culvert improvements item. We, the bridge on Fifty First Street will go also in twenty six. So that will be our other big project, remember that came in far over bid, we just had the one bidder. Um, and so our engineering, uh, someone is working on the plans, uh, right now. We have to pay more for them to do that. President Montgomery, that was that DocuSign that you had to do, and this is covering that, those costs. We are also, you know, we delay the project a year, and all nothing gets cheaper, right? So, anything that's over the engineer's estimate, village is out of the hook for a hundred percent. Now, cause you remember that, uh, we got a hundred percent construction funding uh, for this, but that was in like twenty twenty-two. And so everything just kept getting more expensive, and now anything above our funding agreement, village is on the hook for it. I don't think it's gonna be a lot over, but we're kind of working on that right now. Um, so that is what that item, uh, is, uh, in twenty six. We won't have, um, really any paving that's gonna happen just because of these two humanist projects. We kind of wanna stay away entirely from any neighborhoods that are adjacent to or south of Sherman. Um, just because I think we're gonna get traffic that's gonna find their way through a lot of these neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And then also the bridge, you know, originally, we were gonna mill and overlay a lot of the streets west of Fifty First Street, uh, to Sixtieth Street. Well, I can't touch any of those right now because the bridge will be out. So again, people would get through the neighborhoods, and kind of wanted to stay away from that. Um, well, we're probably gonna focus our paving eff- effort in the far northwest corner of the village. We have the lift station that's up there, and that's been I've seen some problems, and one of the things that's contributing to the lift station is um, a lot of the sewer ladders are leaking in that neighborhood. And so we've got twelve homes, so we'd like to replace the sewer ladders up there. That's our sewer project, and then when we're done, up there we pave the, the roadway. So it'll be like sixty-seventh street, and it kind of wraps down into Donja's.
Yeah.
So that's kind of twenty-six, twenty-seven sewer and road paving projects. Yeah, twenty-six is gonna be a big year, exciting year, I mean, a, a big project, county. Uh, we're just meeting with, Mark, was that on Friday? He was going through kind of a, the staging and everything, and we'll update you as we get a little closer, but Sherman will likely be closed for, at Bradley for a good chunk of time, while they complete that, just to kind of make things go a lot faster. I wanna say it's a move, it's almost three months, or something, I think he said.
Right.
It will get closed down, uh, in the early stages of the project that we open and, and kind of transform the village in twenty six, so pretty exciting.
Alright. Twenty-eight, so I guess it's gonna be very interesting years for the facility. We're talking a huge.
Twenty-eight, we are looking at, you see, are, are you talking about the six hundred thousand?
Six hundred thousand.
Yeah, nevermind, uh, being engineered. So the six hundred thousand, so normally you'll see that item is around five hundred thousand. Um, and that's just our street paving program. So that's like just the neighborhood streets that were milling, overlaying, or, uh, pulverized and relayed. And so normally I would spend about five hundred on that. We don't see that in these other years, just because of the other massive projects that are going on. We're gonna not go lighter on some of the paving. And once you hit back to twenty-eight, it's back into our neighborhood, we'll go paving program. Good.
Alright, that's it for today.
We got Tom, that ain't.
Old Tom, that ain't something, yeah, we can't forget about Tom.
Oh, okay.
This one just.
Don't, don't forget about me. So, yeah.
Hold on, go ahead.
So in this C I P plan a year ago, we had the day landing a creek project in, and we did take it out, as there was just so many unknowns to what was gonna happen. We weren't sure on how many actual bridges would we, would fly over there. We weren't sure if like, we had to redo our engineering study in two years. We weren't sure if we were gonna get those grants, or if we're gonna have to have the tip paid for it. So as of now, we took it all up together. But we would still like to do the project, we're just further investigating it.
Yeah, so once you daylight that creek, that's a good point. So when you daylight that creek, well, right now, the parking lot is over the creek, right? So you can drive back and forth between the north half and the south half. Well, as soon as we daylight it, and so you gotta add some bridges, right? And is the question is like, do you have one bridge, or two bridges? Well, a bridge is expensive, and you're looking at maybe a billion dollars a bridge. And we didn't want to pick a spot, or wherever we did pick, we'd be wrong. And the developer would come back on the north half and say, well, why the heck did you guys put the bridge over here? We wanted, we're here. So we said, well, look, there's too many unknowns with what's gonna happen on the north half. Let's hang tight, have them develop their site plan first, and then we'll reengage and look at the daylight.
But we already got approval for, I mean, in terms of the.
We own the job, we physically own the property. So that's a good thing, because then when we are ready to go, we can do it.
We can do it, yeah.
But I just think there are way too many unknowns, and if we spend money now or do engineer it, yours can end up redoing it. And so, that's just awesome.
Alright.
Alright, that's it now, we're done.
Thank you.
I appreciate, uh, letting me, uh, appear here remotely today to kind of go through our C I P for the water utility. Uh, the biggest thing is always our water main relay. Uh, we've been talking about this for the past couple of years. So in twenty-six, uh, we've got about three hundred thousand dollars to do a small water main, uh, project. And then as we use our new software that we're gonna be developing, uh, to help us kind of get a better, um, decision-making process on where do we do our water main relays, uh, you see that number bump up starting in twenty twenty-seven, where we're doing about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of water main relay per year. So, that's our, obviously, that's our, our biggest, um, annual increase that we have, or for, for C I P, is our water main relay. And again, we've got, you know, roughly about thirty-five percent of our, uh, water mains in the village are in that nineteen forties to nineteen seventy water main that keeps causing us a lot of problems with water main breaks. So, we really wanna, um, make some headway over the next, uh, twenty-five, thirty years and replace the majority of that. And the map that we've got in there is, just shows the different streets that we're currently have shown in the C I P for the different years. That's all gonna change as we start to use this, uh, A I software that's gonna give us a better, uh, feel for where our priorities need to lie with replacing water main. We always have five thousand dollars in there for booster station replacements. We did increase our meter reading, um, equipment replacement. It was, um, I think just over fifty thousand. We've upped that to seventy-five thousand as we've seen prices increase, especially for our radios and for the chips that are in those radios. Um, and we're also increasing the number that we're doing, uh, over the next five years. So that's, uh, why we increased our C I P for our meters, and then again, on our valves and hydro replacement, we increased our number a little bit this year as we've seen, uh, contractor costs go up for that. And we've also seen a need for replacing more valves. Uh, we replaced all the valves on Fifty First Street this year as part of the, uh, street improvement project. And, um, we just keep finding other valves along the way that, uh, are causing us problems. And so, it's a small amount to put in there to replace some valves as we wait until some of those mains, uh, come forward for, uh, replacement, but they're, you know, we're not looking at that for another, uh, ten years down the road. So this is a quick, uh, fix so that we can isolate a break if it happens and not put out, um, you know, a number of blocks worth of customers to repair the, the leak. And then the last thing that I have in there, I believe, for twenty-six was just replacement of one of our pickup trucks, uh, for our field staff. We're gonna replace a twenty thirteen, uh, Chevy pickup truck that's starting to rust. And, uh, talking with Matt, uh, the mechanic, uh, village is selling us, said, uh, if he'd like to, he would like to replace it this year if possible, but we said we're gonna hold off till twenty-six to replace it in twenty-six.
What year is your vehicle?
Uh-huh, I don't have a vehicle.
I mean, this, this that, or that, you're, that's not it, you're saying truck isn't that?
It's a twenty, twenty thirteen.
It's twenty thirteen. Yeah, the pickup truck is from twenty thirteen that we want to replace, so it's, it's, uh, been there for a quarter while.
Any, is that it for you, Tom?
That's it, that's it for me.
Any questions? Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's it, that's it.
Uh, same move back on the forty.
This will come back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have a schedule, we have a schedule in here as we move through the process.
We usually ask them to do a debt schedule through to show the debt impact the next few years.
And will they be ready for the four? Or is it the fourth? The next meeting, yeah?
Yeah, they should be, they should, I think.
Okay. Any questions? This is just a presentation, no need for a vote. Uh, thank you, Derek. You handled it. Uh, so the next item is a move for chairman at seven point four here. Thank you. And with that, everybody.
Yeah, it's gonna be normal, please. Please, I don't, I don't want to hear that.
No, I'm sort of a slasher, I'm like, um.
Is it all this night?
It is, it's back to his own free.
Yeah, it was, yeah, absolutely.